People know that Commissioner John Stenpek will be participating remotely due to his geographic distance from Reading. This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being broadcast live at the RMLD's office at 2:30 Ash Street in Reading. Live broadcasts are available only in Reading due to technology constraints. This meeting was videotaped for distribution to the community TV stations in North Reading, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. And I'd just like to acknowledge the presence of CAB Representative Dave Mancuso to our left here. And is there anybody else who wishes to be acknowledged?
You've got a good lawyer.
Okay. Oh, Chris from Ruben and Redmond is here. Sorry, Ruben and Redmond. I'm a little jet lagged tonight, so if I'm stumbling over my words, it's because I landed from China yesterday.
Why don't you start speaking Chinese?
I won't. It might sound that way, though. And Bob Soli will be the Secretary for tonight's meeting. Is that okay?
I just was.
Well, then, would anybody else? Tom will volunteer for the job.
I'll pull out my cell phone later.
First, I'd like to start off the meeting with just a brief report on a matter that's been out in the public sector for a while, on the matter of the bucket trucks that were sold and some questions raised about that. Just briefly, in April, following the RMLD's policy, an employee bid and won the bids for three bucket trucks for a total of $350, triggering questions. We immediately looked into the matter and found that our policy, which has been in place for about 20 years, is in fact does not comport with state law. The most recent update to this matter is that the trucks have been returned and, as I speak, are parked in the parking lot behind the headquarters. And we thank the employee for doing so promptly. So in terms of those three trucks and any financial matters related to them, this issue is mooted, but of course, the policy and, you know, the structure of how we do these surplus disposal is very much something that we're working on. In the wake of this matter, our General Manager immediately, among many things, immediately froze any other liquidations until we could update our policies. The Policy Committee met and I joined in that meeting at which we agreed with the General Manager's recommendation to send all of our policies out for a thorough legal scrubbing, and that process is well underway. So we, you know, that's part of what's gone on. Hang on, I'm going to give you the rest of it. There's quite a long list of what's happened here. We do have a preliminary revision to the surplus disposal policy, Policy Two, in front of us tonight. Since we've been working on this policy for a few days now and there's been some recent updates, I think it would be prudent to not vote on it tonight. We have some late-breaking comments from the CAB members, which we appreciate, and I think we need time to absorb those and do this properly. In addition, it may be that the town of Reading has its own updating of its policies to do, and if that's the case, then we want to make sure that the two policies are in alignment to the extent appropriate. So, and given that, as I say, the liquidations have been paused administratively, I think this is not going to cause any issues. Among other things that our General Manager has done, she's asked all of the parties involved with this to sign noncollusion forms. She's contacted the State Ethics Commission for advice. She has called for a complete fleet maintenance practices and assessment study and had a company-wide employee meeting and state ethics training implemented, a state ethics seminar scheduled for September. So we're about as thoroughly working on this as possible. So that basically concludes my report on the trucks, and we'll have more updates next month and hopefully be voting in the policy that's actually on the agenda tonight.
Just one comment.
Yes?
Just one item that I became aware of that reminded me when the department sent out the memo on ethics training, Board Commissioners also have to take that training. I was supposed to take it every two years. I'd forgotten all about that. And you're supposed to take it within 60 days of when, I think it's 60 or 90 days of when you first get on the Board, I believe also. So it's an online course. You can get it right off the Attorney General, I believe Attorney General's website. Takes about 20 minutes to a half an hour. And really, I took the course. You get a certificate, and I passed it along to the department to forward to the appropriate party. Commissioners should be taking it, and CAB members and everybody, every town official in town should be taking that online test. I don't know if they're doing it uptown. That's not, you know, something that I'm not aware of, but it should be everybody taking that.
I'd just like to ask our General Manager whether, so is that correct? And also, is there anything that I overlooked in my presentation?
No, that was a good job, Dave. As far as the state ethics, there are two mandated training requirements. One is an annual handout, of which Human Resources has sent out to each of the employees and can forward that to each of the CAB and Commissioners. And the second mandated requirement is to take the online exam every two years. And currently, the town of Reading clerk is the liaison contact, and so they actually send out the link and we return the forms electronically to them. But AJI can help you with that, and I'll have him send out an email.
And there is just one other thing I'd like to add to this, and then if there's any other public comment, be welcome it, which is that this is my first meeting as a Chairman, and also, it happens to be the first meeting after our new General Manager's first anniversary. And the scrubbing that we're doing of all policies, I think, is long overdue, and it's really at the initiative of this General Manager that we're doing it. There've been a number of other things that are really quite, you know, sort of new for RMLD, some very good initiatives going on. Just the last few weeks, we got word that we were awarded a quarter of a million dollar grant for LED streetlights, which is a great initiative that's been out there to be done, and now we're doing it. I think the citizens of the four towns are going to notice a big difference, and the towns themselves are going to notice some savings for taxpayers. That's just one of many. If we had happened to have gotten a blisteringly hot day, all the citizens of the four towns would be exposed to a new mass communications campaign encouraging them to reduce their consumption. This is something that's just been designed and has not yet been implemented. It's never been implemented in the past, but when you get out there and get the message out, if you can knock off 1% of demand as a result of a mass communications campaign, you can save some tens of thousands of dollars, or 80,000 or something like that, just for that one hour of activity by the citizens. So this is another thing that's a really brand-new, hard-to-do effort that is now being done at RMLD. There's a number of other things like that. There's savings on legal bills. There's a number of organizational efficiencies that our General Manager has implemented. So I just wanted to thank her for her hard work. There's a lot left to be done, but I just want to acknowledge that, that this matter is in that context of trying to improve management and organizational efficiencies at the RMLD for the benefit of the ratepayer. Any other public comments at this time on this, on the truck matter or anything else? Dave? Chairman, sorry, John Stenpek? Are you with us still?
No, no comments. I fully agree with your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sir.
The CAB wanted to add a few comments, if this is the moment you would like to add.
Please do, yeah. If it's, yeah, that's, yes.
I'll get, if I can, I'll get the CAB things out of the way for you, if that makes the most sense. First of all, we wanted to congratulate everyone here on the grant that you just referred to for LED lighting. It's pretty exciting news. I know all the CAB members are happy about it, and I think we're all waiting to hear from when I, as the new CAB member, from what I hear, everybody's anxious to hear how that'll be rolled out in the towns. On the truck sale, some feedback was presented to me from CAB members. They asked if I would share this evening. We're very glad to hear that the sale has been reversed and that the trucks have been returned. There is some puzzling done by the CAB about exactly how we got where we got. I think the general feedback is that we have not really convened on it. We'll get together in August and talk more about it. What is the biggest concern is, less so than even the sale of the trucks for $350, is the process by which the Commission and the General Manager have shared information with the CAB. I think the way the CAB has viewed it, the fact that there were assurances that we were within policy and then discovered afterwards, and within the law, and discovered afterwards that we, that may not be the case, is concerning. And it's mostly concerning about the way we, as an organization, approach these kinds of things when they come up. And so the CAB certainly was notified of the initial activities, but then didn't really receive any subsequent information. So we are going to look forward to working very closely with the General Manager and with the Commission to make sure that we have a good flow of information, can serve our roles as advisors to the organization, and serve our communities well by being advocates for them. It really is to the CAB an issue of process as much as policy, and policy can't always dictate common sense. So we are looking forward to working with you all to make sure that we can bring the community's input and maybe make a little bit better process the next time around.
Thank you. Points well taken. Just to respond to part of that, if there was any delay in CAB getting information, I'll take the hit for that. Initially, it was my, I was taking point on gathering information, and I was forwarding it immediately to the town accountant and others in the town to, you know, to help us figure out, you know, what the best way was forward. If there was a need for me to also send to the CAB, I didn't know about it, and I apologize for that.
It's accepted. We just look forward to working on a process to make sure we know how that's going to happen.
And I think also to the point of, you know, I think our own understanding of it evolved over the weeks, and we, as we understood things, and we were forwarding them on to people like the town accountant. You know, the first I've heard from any CAB members is in the last couple of days, and that's actually in response to that feedback that helped make the decision, let's hold off tonight, and...
That was my last comment. I want to thank you for doing that. It's appreciated.
I mean, yeah, I think you mentioned it, and so did Dave Nelson, and that's fine. It makes perfect sense. So, you know, yeah, I don't know what more there is to say about it, so we can move on with the rest of the agenda unless the General Manager has anything to add to that.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I think now we have a report from the Policy Committee, from Phil.
Yep, okay. The Policy Committee met on July the 1st, and basically at that meeting, there was both the town accountant Sharon Engstrom and John Arena specifically to come and discuss the truck gate issue. Truck gate. And, you know, make some suggestions as to what the policy should be. The Policy Committee, basically all along, had been working with the General Manager and really felt that the, you know, had followed her recommendation that the policy needed to be sent out, scrubbed, cleaned up, modernized. I don't know if that's the right word, but there needed to be adjustments made to the policies. And so at that meeting, we met very soon after the whole thing happened, so the whole truck gate happened, and it was the decision at that point to send the policies out to legal counsel, to get them cleaned up, scrubbed up, change, you know, do some changing, whatever need changed, need to be made on that, and that's where it stands right now. I would hope that at some point, the Policy Committee will probably meet again within the next month, I would hope, once the policies come back. Particularly, I mean, one of the things I was going to suggest, and you've already addressed it tonight, in terms of the policy on the surplus, the Policy Committee has not met to discuss that either at this point. So I was going to ask that you defer that until the legal policy committee can meet on that one also, too, before it comes back to this Commission, so we make a recommendation to you. But you've already addressed that, so, which is fine. So at this point in time, it's just a matter of reconvening the committee sometime in the next 30 days, I would hope, and that we can go forward and, you know, make these changes, whatever changes are necessary to move things along and clean up some things.
Thanks, Phil. Yeah, I think we'll end up with the tightest policy in the state.
We'll end up with the tightest.
But it'll be among the tightest in the state. And I think, so I think, at this point, is there anything we need to do to formally not vote on this, just from a procedural standpoint?
Okay.
So we will formally not vote on this. Now, the next item on the agenda, then?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Could we give you some comments?
Yes, absolutely. On the policy?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Send those to the head manager. Give him the call in on that.
Okay, so moving along?
Yeah, and quite, if any Commissioners have any other comments, please send them to the General Manager's, the General Manager's office.
We will. There's been some email.
If CAB members also, if they have comments.
I know it'll be on the agenda in August, and if we need to move faster than that, just let us know, and we'll...
Right, right. And even, you know, so, okay.
Okay, so then the next item is also Phil reporting on an update on the Charter Committee.
Okay, now, you have in the package tonight the legal opinion from Ruben and Redmond. I am a member of the Charter Review Commission. That's basically reviewing and updating the Charter, the Reading Town Charter at this point. One of the issues that has now been raised at this point, the Ruben and Redmond, and I need some guidance from the Board at this point, is the, in the bylaws, in the Charter, there's a couple of items that are concerning to the General Manager and legal counsel. One is the appointment of the accounting manager and the chief accountant of the Reading Municipal Light Department, and that, they try to make that be appointed by the Board, the Commission. The other one is basically the adoption of Section 30B at this point. In terms of the two issues there, the feeling and the legal opinion is that they conflict with the state law at this point, that under the state law, under Section 164, Chapter 164, Section 57, I believe is the correct notation, 56. Close. Come on, I got close. Basically, in the, in terms of that, it says the General Manager is responsible for all the employees of the department. The only response, the only person that the Commission is responsible for is the General Manager. We can't reach in the department, tell anybody what to do. We can only go through the General Manager, and this is my understanding of the law, and we've always done that. And that's the item. And the Charter, in essence, tried to change this. The other concern here is the 30B. The 30B was basically if, the Commission, as I understand it, never voted the 30B, from what I understand. I don't know if we did that intentionally or unintentionally. I don't think the previous General Management brought it to the Commission, that we had to vote on that, quite truthfully, at the time this was going on. And so, as I understand it, if we put the, if we vote 30B, the power contracts would also have to come to 30B, and that could be, that could be a very problematic issue. Because those power contracts, I understand, only stay open for a short period of time, and to go through the 30B process, you will not be able to get the best deals, quite truthfully. And correct me if I'm wrong at any time here, please. Or if I'm, the third item that you have here is the, basically the information, the presentation to the Reading Finance Committee. Now, what, in the past, we've actually had to remind the Finance Committee that we should be making a presentation to them in terms of that. And one of the things that maybe we need to do is just maybe clean up the language in that area and say that we will make some sort of informational presentation to them in terms of where the Charter goes forward. But, and I've given you, and I don't know if, does anybody need a hand, anybody need a refresher on 2003? As to what happened? Okay, let me give you, let me give you the, in 2003, I got 2003, is that the right year? 2003, the, what we call the ILS took place, what's been nicknamed the ILS. Basically, at that point, the Inspector General came out with a report that found some impropriety, and there was a Governors Committee that was set up by the town of Reading to look into the, look into these procedures. At that point, the, some of these recommendations came in place, the fact that the Board would appoint the accounting manager, that the 30B would be put in place except for the power contracts, and there'd be some sort of informational meeting to address the 30B governance at this point. And that's really what took place in 2003 at that point. There were other things that were proposed at the time. They were proposing that the Commission be appointed, which would have wreaked havoc, quite personally, with the three outside towns, considering that the majority of the, our customers are outside of the town of Reading. That would have been a major problem going outside of town, so. And that's what happened in 2003, and these changes came about at that point. What I'm really looking for at this point is some sort of guidance. There's a meeting, the Committee is meeting next Monday night at this point. I need some sort of direction from the Board. What I've given you tonight is a couple of things. I've given you originally what I jotted and threw up as trial balloon, where it's got the word "draft" and it says "delete," that I presented the last meeting of the Charter Review Commission. And I've also given you Mr. Brown, Bill Brown, who's a member of the Charter Commission, kind of wrote his own little area here, too. And I've given you a copy of that tonight at this point, so. That's where we're at. So.
Do you like a next comment?
Please, John.
Well, thank you, Phil. There's certainly a number of aspects to this, and I think each one of them probably needs to be addressed separately. I think that there is any conflict with state law, we certainly don't want to be in that area. So I think it needs to be extremely clear that we, whatever we do going forward, we are not in conflict with state law. I think there's also been a recommendation that the General Manager was going to look at components of the 30B to see if there were certain pieces that were appropriate and others that were inappropriate, so we wouldn't have that type of conflict. And the other provisions that you had mentioned in terms of appointed versus elected, I do agree that that would significantly lessen the independence of the Board of Commissioners overall, which would, I think, cause significant issues with our faculty service for towns and not just Reading. So I think that could be a major issue as well. So I think we need to be very careful looking forward. We need to take a bit more time to get this right, and so I agree with you, we need to provide some guidance to you relative to this, but I think that blind acceptance of any of these cannot happen immediately. And if there's any guidance, I would suggest that if you have to research each one of them and come back with a recommendation.
Thank you, John. And I would just add to that, that, you know, as part of our thorough, top-to-bottom policy scrubbing, we're going to be sort of doing just that and coming up with some suggested language changes.
I'll make a comment.
Please.
As I said, my recommendations, there's nothing that we can find that anyone has ever voted, that's, you know, the ad hoc committee or anything that had happened in the past. Only the Board of Commissioners can vote to adopt 30B. And when you would vote to adopt 30B, you can't do it in pieces. It has to be its entirety, which would exclude us from being competitive in power supply completely. So what you do have right now is the procurement policy number nine that essentially adopts 30B in some fashion. That's being sent out to be scrubbed, and that's my recommendation, is that you would continue to follow 30B because it's good business practice, but you would say in the policy where it makes sense and where it doesn't make sense to prevent any type of competitive process for the RMLD in its enterprise structure. So that speaks to the 30B. As far as the, and Priscilla just went to get my policy numbers, but you have a policy right now that actually says that you can appoint the town accountant, and that is in violation of the law, and that is one of the reasons why that policy is being sent out. So my overall recommendation would be to wait for legal to come back with the recommendations on the policies, since you already have ones in place, and to make sure that they are not in violation of the law. And I think at that point, you might be in a better position to take your comments back to the Charter Review Committee. We could ask Chris when he might have those policies back, so that you can look at the timeframe.
Chris? Chris, do you want to speak to that?
The, one second, Chris. I just want to clarify, it's, Jeanie's telling me it's Policy 19.
Yep. Policy 19.
Which is simply the Board of Commissioners' policy. So that's, there are, there are line items in that policy that, you know, similar to the truck policy, need to be, you know, reviewed and scrubbed to make sure that we are not out of compliance with law.
So I would agree with that, and as far as I'm concerned, that would be the feedback that I would bring back to the Commission.
Yeah, the only thing that I will add, that the, I remember in 2003 that the town attorney at the time disagreed with the memo that you have here from Ruben and Redmond. So that is, the town clerk is, has submitted the copy of this memo, this opinion, to the Reading, the New Reading Council, to get their opinion on this, whether or not these changes can be made or not at this point. That is one of the decisions that was made at the Charter Review Committee.
Do we want counsel to make any comment?
Sure. Please.
Yep.
Do you want to step up to the microphone, please, and state your name for the folks in the cheap seats?
Can I make a comment?
Please, John.
Submitting things to the town council isn't a bit of a conflict of interest if you want us to use the town council as well as the town accountant, or did I misread that? Was the accountant as well as counsel?
No, no. It's being submitted only to the Reading Town Council. The Ruben and Redmond opinion is being reviewed by the Reading Town Council also at this point.
Clarification, John, is on who appoints RMLD's accountant and RMLD's counsel.
Thank you. I wasn't sure whether it included both the accountant and the counsel.
I may be right, is it?
And so you could obviously have the conflict of interest, submit something to the counsel for an opinion on this.
Is it, is it the town auditor that was also, weren't there two positions that we were discussing? Or just, was it only the?
Policy 19 says the accountant slash business owner is appointed by the board.
Right. It's only the, it's basically that in terms of the audit, the Board has a representative on the, on the town of Reading Audit Committee, and it's basically we use the auditor that the town, the Audit Committee selects is the one that we use. So, okay.
Chris?
You had asked about timing with respect to a review of the purchasing policies. In looking at a...
I'm sorry, I can't hear who's speaking?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Stenpek. My name is Chris Pollard, counsel for the RMLD from Ruben and Redmond, and was responding to the question from Commissioner, Chairman Talbot with respect to timing involved in reviewing the purchasing policies. And in looking at a calendar and thinking about what we need to do to complete that process, I would think that a reasonable timeframe would be mid to end of August. We need to review the policies, research the applicable law, meet with the applicable folks at RMLD who are in charge of purchasing, figure out what aspects of 30B make sense for the department, what aspects don't, and what other good practice purchasing practices should be included. Get a draft together, have that reviewed and commented on by RMLD's staff, and then present a final recommended policy to the Board for its review.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we don't need to take any action at this point, or do we need to?
Can you just reiterate what you said in legal opinion as far as the laws that relate to the town account, I mean, the RMLD accountant, counsel, and also maybe speak to the auditor, selecting an auditor?
Yes. The General House, Chapter 164, Section 56, specifically says that the General Manager shall be responsible for hiring employees, agents, and counsel. And the Golubic decision has looked at aspects of 156, and other cases have as well, and have opined and clarified, further clarified, that it's the General Manager exclusively that has the charge of all employees, agents, and counsel at the RMLD. And that with respect to the Board, the Board plays an extremely important function of establishing and setting policy, and that one of the most important functions of the Board besides policy is selecting a General Manager, and that was within the sole... sole, uh, sole authority of the board. Uh, but then, with respect to the department and the day-to-day operation of the plant, which includes the hiring of all these people, that is exclusively within the control of the general manager.
Do you have any comment on the auditor? I know that we use Melanson Heath because the town does, but I was, I was under the impression that that is just in a spirit of cooperation, but not, um, by law.
That is correct, that is not required by law. Um, the hiring, um, of an auditor for RMLD finances, um, would be up to the general manager's discretion.
Any other comments or questions?
Uh, I think the stressing of 30B is very, very much important. Apparently, the town charter says that RMLD should use 30B, but not for power supply. And as already been pointed out, if you take one bite, you have to swallow the whole thing on, on 30B. And the power supply contracts, as, has been pointed out to us, typically, the offer from the vendors is open for one hour. So, the light department has one hour to look at the offerings and decide which of any of these to take, and within chapter thirty-B, you just couldn't do that. Apparently, no other muni has signed up for chapter thirty-B because they have looked at that very, uh, instance and realized it makes life unworkable. So I think that needs to be stressed to the committee, Phil.
Yep.
And at, at another time, to town meeting also.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, so let me, let me just make sure that I understand what directions I've been given, if you would, please, Mr. Chairman. Uh, basically, the committee is asking, the commission is asking me just to kind of hold off or wait until we get the policies all scrubbed, and to move forward at that point, at this point, at that point, so. That's what I'm hearing from the, from the, from the commission. Am I, am I hearing correctly?
I believe so, uh, general manager.
Very good, I just want to confirm.
John, is that okay by you?
Uh, yes, would you repeat it one more time, please?
Yeah, what I'm hearing, that the, that the direction I'm getting from the commission is that, uh, we, we're requesting that everything kind of stand in place right now while the department, while the department's policies are being, uh, scrubbed and updated and cleaned up and made all new again, and once we get that done, we can go forward with what, with the, with any type of charter change at that point.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I think that's very logical, too, since the policies are.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? No, if not, if not, we'll move on to the general manager's report.
Uh, Priscilla Gottwell is going to give an update on our recent, um, cable TV presentation on the unbundling of the bill.
I think that I had sent the YouTube connection to the commissioners, I don't know if you all got to see it, but we, um, Jane Parento and Colleen and I, um, were filmed, I think it was on June twenty-fifth or sixth, and we talked about, um, the unbundling of the rates, you know, we had a demo, uh, presentation of a poster that, uh, showed the new line items and the explanation, and subsequently put it up on the website, so that each line has, um, its explanation. Um, and then we also talked about our, uh, responsive communications program, uh, which we have set up in the kiosk, uh, for customers to sign up for paperless billing and auto payment, and we have a little, um, prize for, um, anyone who signs up, uh, who has a chance to win a prize. Um, that night, we had, um, we were set up for questions from the public, but we had no one attend, or we had no one calling in, but we had prepared questions, and I think that we covered it pretty thoroughly. So.
Thank you.
Did you want me to talk about anything else in, in public relations?
Just a little update on the responsive communication that we talked about on that, uh, cable TV show. Uh, we recently met with all of the fire chiefs and, and a couple of the town managers, uh, this past week, and the police department, and discussing more about utilizing their, um, reverse nine-one-one system, whether it's Everbridge or Code Red. Um, Hamid Jafari and his staff has helped put together the, um, uh, the power watch and, and, um, voltage reduction, uh, scenarios that could occur that will go to those systems, uh, while RMLD works, uh, forward in, in their technology, uh, strategic plan that may come up with using their own system in the future, but for right now, in order to get out that information, in the unlikely event that there's, uh, an ISO New England grid system operation, such as a public appeal for conservation, or a voltage reduction or anything, perhaps maybe because of the shutdown of Salem Harbor, we just want everyone to know. So if you have an opportunity, we're requesting that you sign up at the kiosk or any of the Everbridge or Code Red kiosks that the police and fire have throughout the four towns.
One other thing, Colleen.
Yep.
Um, we also are in touch with all four superintendents of the schools in the towns, and each one of them has agreed to, um, if, as when we send them, um, an alert, that they will contact all the parents if they have email for. And I think that they probably have a more thorough, uh, email system.
Thank you for that. What, what does this have to do with the police and fire exactly, what's this kiosk?
Uh, the police and fire are the sa- uh, public safety that, uh, is in charge of the emerg- emergency, uh, communication systems, which are, are Everbridge or, or, uh, Code Red. And so we, uh, presented, um, what it, we presented what our power, uh, alerts would constitute somewhat of an emergency.
No, I get that part, I'm wondering, what does the citizen have to do, if anything, to receive such alerts? You must have something about.
Uh, they'll, right, the, the alerts are a power watch, which will basically say you should conserve between these hours on this day, it'll come out if you're signed up on the kiosk to get those alerts, whether a text or an email.
Okay, that's the part I'm trying to just unpack, yeah.
Okay. If, when you sign up on the kiosk, um, for each of the towns, you can receive the alert.
So where are the kiosks? That's what I mean, is like, what does sign up at the kiosk mean?
Well, we have a kiosk here in our lobby, and then, do you know where the kiosks are for each of the four, each of the three towns?
Uh, Redding has one right at the police station in their lobby.
Okay.
But, but simply, um, citizens could go on the regular, um, um, town websites and opt in for their emergency alerts, and, and they will get those alerts that way.
So what we're saying to the public, if anybody's watching, is go to your town's website.
Right.
And sign up for the public safety alerts.
Yeah.
Which can be found where on the websites, like at the, under, is it clear where, where people can find it, so they can do the signing up?
Uh, I think it's a community link, I think it says community link.
So hunt around on your town's website.
I'll, I'll, I'll get that.
Sign up, that way you'll get the alerts, and, uh, we'll all be better off.
Right. The alerts will all be, also be sent to all four cable TV.
Yep.
Uh, community, uh, as well.
Thank you for that, that's a great initiative.
Yep.
The next, uh, line item, uh, is, um, uh, Chairman Talbot briefed, uh, gave a little brief on, I'll, I'll expand just a little bit. Uh, the RMLD was a recipient of a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant by the Department of Energy, uh, for, um, for energy, um, Department of D O E R, for energy efficiency programs for customers, uh, of municipal light plants. Uh, the intent was to expand cost savings and, and, um, environmental benefits. The RMLD will receive seventy-three thousand dollars for commercial industrial LED programs, forty-seven thousand dollars for residential LED programs, and then thirty-one-point-two-five-thousand each for LED streetlight conversions for each of the four towns, Redding, North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield. Um, and that, uh, plays right into our, uh, six-year transparent, um, capital budget that was calling for the LED, um, conversion program over the next three years. The LED pilot program, now that we have, um, unbundled the rates and we, uh, have a new LED streetlight rate, as well as a low-income rate, uh, the LED pilot will commence this week. Uh, we're in the process of buying those lights, and I will send the commissioners, as well as all of the CAB members, the LED pilot program, which has been looked at by each of the town managers. I, I went to visit each of the town managers, and they're happy with the areas that we're going to be demoing.
Very good.
Okay, next, next item?
That's a great, great initiative.
Okay, next item on the list is the, uh, charging station. The RMLD is providing a joint venture partnership for electric charging stations at the place of their businesses. So any commercial industrial customer that's looking for, uh, to join us in this. These, uh, charging stations allow access to electric vehicles for their employees, the employees' commuting practices are improved, and it reduces, uh, greenhouse gases amongst other environmental benefits. It also enhances employee benefits and increases, uh, recruitment. Um, charging stations are one mechanism that can help RMLD manage its peak demand. Um, the RMLD will assisting, will assist customers in obtaining the grants from the Commonwealth to fund fifty percent of a unit with a cap of twenty-five thousand dollars per project. So if you have any questions, please call Integrated Resources at RMLD.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Um, it helps peak how, because they're not, they, they will not, they'll, they'll be switched off during the peak hours, because those are giant loads, obviously.
Yeah, that's, um, depending on what their charging arrangement will be, yeah, we, we work with the customer as far as that partnership to make sure that we're, uh, you know, staying away from the peak.
Yeah.
And any type of charging would be, um.
Because obviously, people go to work, and they're at work during peak hours.
Right.
If they're driving to work and plugging in their electric cars, and we suddenly have hundreds of cars, or thousands, where suddenly we have peak, you know, we have peak problems unless.
Right. Yeah, the charging scheduling is played into that partnership, so that there's a win-win on both sides.
That's another great initiative. Um, it's something I've been thinking about, too, which is, since we're so close to the highways, and there's a lot of eighty-mile range electric cars out there now on the roads, and more coming, and people need places to charge that's convenient to highways, that for the future, maybe we can think about building charging stations for the public that are convenient to, um, highway interchanges, if we can, and it would be another way to generate business.
Yeah.
This is an idea out of the blue.
Yes. We just want to be careful, if people were to install them, you can't sell for resale.
Correct.
That's part of the terms and conditions, so we just want to be cautious of that, so.
What I'm saying is that we can be doing it.
No, I know. I'm just, I'm just trying to send that out there.
Right.
If you're interested in building one, just make sure that you're in compliance with, uh, the terms and conditions of your, of your electric provider in this territory.
Good point, because there are social media sites that list charging stations, and if you look at them, you'll see that people do put their charging station in their driveway on these social media sites, and people will, will find those, and that's, that's not allowed, so.
Right.
We'll, we'll be watching for that. And switching you off, I'm just kidding, but, um, it's not, it's not allowed, but it, maybe it's something RMLD could do directly, and that generates sales, and, um.
Okay, I, one, one last item, uh, on my list is the MWEC debt retirement. Mix one of our power supply, uh, consists of three megawatts of Millstone, uh, nuclear plant, and three hundred KW of Seabrook nuclear plant, and as of July first, um, this debt reduction reduces capacity costs by nine-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars this fiscal year. And, uh, I included that in the budget, so when we redid the budget and laid out, um, the six-year plan, that was put in there. Mix three, four, and five, which are also combinations of both Seabrook and Millstone, will be retiring their debt in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. Um, those were both, those are about one-point-two-million dollars apiece, and those were also included in the, in the, um, in the budget.
Moving on to the power supply report, Bill Selton.
Good evening, I'm here to present the May purchase power summary report. Uh, RMLD's load for May of two thousand fourteen was fifty-four-point-four-seven million kilowatt-hours, which is approximately two million kilowatt-hours less than May of two thousand thirteen. Referring to Table one of the report that you have in your books, uh, the energy costs for the month of May were approximately one-point-seven-three-million dollars, or three-point-one-two cents per kilowatt-hour. The May fuel charge adjustment, as well as June's, um, was six-and-a-half cents a kilowatt-hour, and the estimated deferred fuel cash reserve for the month, for the end of the fiscal year, is, uh, projected to be two-point-one-seven-five-million dollars. Moving on to Table two, RMLD purchased approximately six-and-a-half percent of its energy requirements from the ISO New England spot market at an average cost of approximately five cents a kilowatt-hour. The peak demand for May occurred on Monday, the twelfth, at six PM, and the peak demand was approximately a hundred-point-one-seven megawatts. The temperature at the time happened to be about forty-nine degrees, um, and this compares to a two thousand thirteen May peak demand of a hundred-and-forty-three-point-eight-three megawatts, when it was about ninety-two degrees. So there's a little weather, weather, uh, action there. Moving on to Table three, RMLD's monthly capacity requirement was two-hundred-and-fifteen-point-five-seven megawatts for May. The total capacity dollars were one-point-three-seven million, which equates to about six dollars and thirty-eight cents per kilowatt-month. Table four shows the combined capacity and energy costs, as well as the amount of energy that was generated by all of the department's projects that we participate in. The costs for capacity and energy for the month came in at about five-point-six cents per meg, per kilowatt-hour. And of all of the kilowatt-hours generated for the month, fourteen-point-two percent were, um, purchased from hydro or, um, uh, green, green power sources. Table five, um, depicts the, uh, projected renewable energy certificates that have been generated through the month of May, which comes in at about, uh, approximately eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three, with a projected, uh, cost or value of three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars, which is, equates to, I believe, approximately forty-three dollars a rec. Table six, uh, shows the transmission costs for the month. Uh, the costs for transmission in May were six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars, or approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars lower than April's transmission costs, and that has to do with, uh, the lower peak for the month. Table seven, uh, shows, uh, our, our energy efficiency efforts, um, and highlighting the, uh, total dollars expended to date for the fiscal year. They are three-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, uh, with an estimated savings in capacity of one-point-one-six megawatts, and a reduction of, uh, kilowatt-hours of two-point-seven million. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Bill. Engineering Operations Report, uh, Hamid Jafari.
Yeah, I think he stepped out.
Oh, he did.
Can we go to, um?
Switch to Bob Fornier with the financial report. Evening.
Tonight, I'll be presenting the May financials, which represents the eleventh month of our fiscal year. So looking at page three for the month of May, net income with a positive change in net assets was about one-point-three-million, which made our year-to-date net income a little over a million dollars. The year-to-date budgeted net income at this point was about three million, resulting in net income being in the budget by about two million. The actual year-to-date fuel expenses exceeded fuel revenues by only three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars. Looking at page eleven-B on the revenue side, the year-to-date base revenues are under budget by about one-point-three-million. Uh, the actual base revenues came in at forty-two-point-four-million, compared to the budgeted amount of forty-three-point-eight-million. On the expense side, page twelve-A, the year-to-date. On the expense side, page 12A, the year-to-date purchase power base expense was under budget by about $178,000. The actual purchase power base cost came in at $26 million, compared to the budgeted amount of $26.2 million. On the operating and maintenance side, those expenses combined are under budget by about $67,000. The actual operating maintenance expenses come in at about $11.6 million, compared to the budgeted amount of $11.7 million. depreciation expense and voluntary payments for four towns were all on budget. Looking at page 9, the cash section, operating fund balance is at $11.6 million, capital fund balance at $4.3 million, the rate stabilization funds at $6.7 million, deferred fuel $2.2 million, and energy conservation fund is at $452,000. On the general information side, year-to-date kilowatt sales, which I found on page 5, were at $632 million, which is about 10 million kilowatt-hours, or about 1.5% behind last year's actual figures. During the month of June, we had the inventory physical count, which took place at the end of the month. That went well without any surprises. The receivable con firms went out the first full week in July, so some of our customers will be receiving those from our audits, and we encourage them to respond back to them. The audit field work is scheduled for August, the week of August 18th, and the auditors will make a full report at the September board meeting. On the budget variance side, cumulatively, all five divisions run the budget by $42,000, or about quarter of 1%.
I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
The sales being down by 1.5%, is it attributable to what? That's for the first five months of the year, right? Is that for the first five months of this year, or that's not the fiscal year, right?
Which number are you looking at?
Number 5, year-to-date, sorry. So that's five months, right? And it's, sales are 10 million kilowatt-hours or 1.56 behind.
That's for the first 11 months.
First 11 months.
We're in fiscal year June 30th, so it's the first 11 months, so.
So it's interesting that, you know, that sales are drifting down, right? So what do you attribute that to? I mean, is it efficiency? Is it?
It's probably the conservation efforts, weather.
Yep. For a year, though, averaging the weather over a year, you would expect it to be largely the same, right, for the year? So I guess I'm just pointing out that, you know, the overall business model is, you know, is sort of flat to declining, because trends are lower consumption for a variety of reasons. In spite of development that continues, you know, those, sales are declining. So it's something for us all to keep in mind, that as we keep on the same path, we're going to expect to see less sales and more pressure on our finances. And it just, it suggests a need to look at new ways to drive the business in different directions, new initiatives that are not what we're doing now. What those might be, we could discuss at other meetings, but that's all. Internet. Did I say that? That's all. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess just to follow up on that, so if we looked at the month-to-month, is it a, is it kind of a constant decline, 5% decline?
Hey, if you look at, if you compare May, last year May, we're about down 2 million kilowatt-hour. So if you, you know, if you even average a half million, 750,000 kilowatt-hours per month, you get to the 10 million pretty quick. But even last, last year at this time, we're 2 million, 2 million kilowatt-hour sales down.
So, yeah, I mean.
It's really a, it's really a reflection of the weather. If you get a nice cold snap or hot spell, you know, plus that conservation programs are working.
Right. So within a month, you're going to expect that weather, but over the course of a year, you would expect those to be more or less averaged, that you've had more cold or more hot days, but over the course of a year, generally, they should be about average, the, the weather-related effects on consumption.
In theory, yeah.
In theory. So, yeah, so there's a drifting down of demand and a drifting up of fixed costs, meaning transmission-related costs, which will be putting pressure on us over the long term. So, thanks, Bob. Any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
And Hameed Jafari, we missed you last time, but we're glad to see that you're back. And he's going to present our plan for selling data to the four towns. He's been working on this all week. He's got a complete plan for this. Just kidding. I'm joking.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The report, the first section is basically, the first page is the financials. The next page, page 1, I'm going to start the capital improvement projects. We've made quite progress on five of the reconductors in the Ballard Vale area, 50% completed. The other projects are ongoing, the upgrade of the old Linfield Senate Cook's Farm, as well as the U R D upgrades in all towns, step-down transformers upgrades in all four communities, and also the station for getaway replacement, which has completed some of the charges that you see as reflected in the month of May. And the new customer service connections, we had no, no new commercial industrial service connections in May, but we've had some activities for service installations and residential customers in all four communities. The next page, you see the routine construction, capital improvement. As you see, we've made, we've had quite activities in the month of May. Had number five projects completed in North Reading, Reading, and Wilmington, including the Station 5 RTU replacement at Station 5. We had seven pole damages that were hit by cars and in the other areas, such as the underground subdivisions, the new constructions. We had three completed in Wilmington, two in Wilmington, and one in Reading. And we had miscellaneous capital costs of $57,000 to $724. So the total activity for the month of May was $156,664 that you see over there. Under the maintenance program, we have seven maintenance areas, maintenance programs established. And we're making quite progress on those. Under the age and overloaded transformer replacements, we've had a number of single-phase transformers replaced in all four communities, as well as the three-phase transformers that we're inspecting. These are the ones that aged over 20 years old. And we are planning to replace them as we go, because of the age and the load, obviously. The pole testing system, we had a bid request for codes. We received the codes, but we would like to do the electronic testing, as opposed to sound boring, which only one vendor coded, and it's gone out again, so this time we're hoping that we have more participation from the vendors. 138 KV, 35 KV feeders inspections, quarter inspection, that's going quite well. We've completed, we completed four in the month of May. The manhole inspection program, it's in development. The porcelain cutouts replacements, we replaced total 44 cutouts and upgraded those. The infrared scanning, the substations that started in month of June, it's completed, and month of July also completed. This program started in month of May. So we haven't found significant problems at the substations, with the exception of a few minor issues that we are addressing and we're taking care of. And then the system reliability, as you could see on page 3, the system average interruption durations for past four years. For the month of May, we're doing well. It was 6.26, which is well below the national average and the regional average. System average interruption frequency index was quite good too, was .16, which is again below the national and regional average. And lastly, the customer average interruption duration, as you can see on the chart, it's 38.13, which is again well below the national and regional average. On page 5, you see 2014 outage causes types year-to-date, ending May 31st, 2014. As you could see, 48% of those were related to equipment. These are the transformers and cutouts and failures that we've had due to the equipment problems. Followed by trees and wildlife issues that we've had. And other than that, everything else pretty much looks good. And that's the end of my report. Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
On the first page, total capital budget for the year is $6.1 million. And through 11 months, there's still $2.7 million remaining. I would guess that means that there is a lot that's going to be carried over.
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So now we move on to general discussion. Does any board member have anything to add to tonight's agenda?
John, any ads from your side?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Then I guess we need to move to go into executive session, unless I've overlooked something, which I have. Oh, correct, okay. So do we have an August date set up yet?
Well, this is, the CAP is meeting on August 13th. Per month, August is going to be kind of tough, because you, the board's going to be at the conference.
Right, right.
I mean, I could want to go for the first week, maybe start, get a policy committee the first week of September.
Oh, I see. So skip the August meeting.
I mean, it's going to be kind of tough.
Yeah, okay.
Then maybe for the first week of September, get a policy committee meeting and stick with the September date. Because the only problem is you're not going to get the financial information. That's the problem.
Right.
You schedule it prior to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
No distractions to that.
Yeah, I think that's.
So the proposed dates of Thursday, September 24th, and Thursday, October 29th, for our next board meetings.
Maybe want to try to get a policy committee date set up.
You get a policy committee date set up somewhere in between.
Yeah, I'll send out emails.
Yeah, send out an email.
Yeah.
Let us know on that. Just as a quick item, I now have to withdraw from the conference this year. I cannot make it.
Okay.
The state of New York would like to see me on the 26th, so. Here in the, with the client, so. Have to delist me.
Okay, with that, then, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'm ready, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Phil?
Moved that the board go into executive session to discuss mediation and union negotiations update, and to return regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
A second?
Second.
We have to do a roll call, right?
Yeah.
Pull the board. Pull the board. Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, aye.
Talbot, aye.
Talbot, aye. And with that. Sorry, John. With that, the motion is carried 5:00. We now adjourn to go into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.